All right, we're going to continue the joint session. We're going into the Phase Two, which is the Shenandoah City Council meeting for June 26, 2024. As we already called a role in the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation, we're going to move on to Citizens Forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters relating to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address council and give their needs before sharing their comments. First speaker we have is Joshua Parks.
Hello, council, neighbors, city staff. My name is Joshua Parks. I live at 707 Rosewood Drive, on and off resident in the neighborhood for 34 years. I'm pretty sure everybody knows my concerns, but it's for the homeless man at the Circle K. My concerns are what preventative measures does the city have to keep a homeless encampment from being built on private property, especially at the front of our neighborhood? My other concerns is that man sleeping on the sidewalk, or not the sidewalk, I'm sorry, the parking lot, that he could be ran over very easily at nighttime. I'm worried that, you know, a teenager that's not paying attention in the car with their friends, texting, pulling a parking spot, run that guy over. It's the end of their life and his as well. It's a bad situation. It's sad. I understand that some of y'all have helped him and got him hotel rooms, and I commend y'all for that. It's very nice that he's able to get hygiene and clean himself. I also understand, as far as homelessness goes, he's a very unique individual. He cleans up after himself. He's very well presented. He's very clean. But my concern is, is what's stopping more homeless from coming and camping out in that area? I understand also that one man does not affect property values or anything like that, but I do understand that an encampment would affect property values of the city. I also worry that the city could be held liable by this Circle K corporation for a lawsuit if he is ran over or something happens to him there. I don't know the legality. I'm not a lawyer. I work in oil and gas. If you want to ask me about drilling for oil and stuff, I could help you with that. My question is, why is he allowed to stay there? I understand that y'all might not be able to answer this question. I think I can answer it myself. It's private property. For that matter, my question would be, why is there not a city ordinance that bans camping in public view from the street on private property unless it designated camping areas or campgrounds or the area that the city has provided for the homeless? I guess possible solutions that I have, some people won't like this, and that's okay too. I see that he has a great impact with the city and his mother did as well, and a lot of people cherish and care for him. I think maybe there's possibly a dead space somewhere in the city that's 15, 20 by 20 or something where we could donate that land as a monument? And then if, and not necessarily that the city would have to pay for the monument, but we could raise donations, where we could build a bench for him to sleep on where he's off of the ground and possibly a government, so he's out of the rain and elements and stuff. Another thing is maybe we could raise money if he is willing to accept a rickshaw bicycle or a bicycle with a trailer, so he's not having to push that shopping cart around in 100-degree weather. I know that people from the city and the police department talk to this individual, interact with him, and have good relationships with him. So if that's something that someone's willing to do, I would be offering $300 for my personal money to donate towards these things. Thank you and have a blessed day.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, I see I have a number there for you. We'll reach out to you and discuss this further.
That's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next speaker, Estelleum.
I wasn't here earlier when you had the prayer, and so I was going to say that I appreciate the fact that you start out with prayer in these meetings. And that's what I'm going to talk about tonight. Some of you have heard that Tennessee Governor Bill Lee has recently issued a proclamation for the state designating 30 days of prayer and fasting for the nation. And it's voluntary, of course. And, you know, it's interesting because there's 31 days in July, but he made it 30 days. I'm not really sure what that's about. But I came here tonight to ask the city to do something similar because we have a few things that, you know, we could use God's help with. He was just talking about the homeless problem. What about the fact that we've had to increase the police? We've even had, we've added police dogs since I've moved here because of the drug trafficking on the freeway. We also, a couple of months ago, we saw a couple that lived in the city arrested for possessing illegal recordings of young girls. And then most recently, I think, we've had a data breach that disclosed information, very personal information, of about 450-some people. And so I could go on and on, but I'm not going to because of time. I'll just say that from the beginning of our nation's history, we've had Congress and we've also had government leaders issue these kinds of proclamations. And I think that this would be a good thing for our city. And so I've just taken the liberty to draft a very short, one-page, something that you could, proclamation or resolution you could consider. And I would like to see it on the agenda for the next meeting, which I believe is July 10th. As we all know, July 11th is going to be a very historic day for this nation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go. There are no additional speakers, so we're going to move on to item six. Discussion of possible action to approve rules and procedures for the block party trailer.
Mayor, this is a discussion only?
Okay.
Yes.
This motion.
Motion to table.
Got a motion to table this item?
Mm-hmm.
Have a second? No second? Want to discuss it?
I question, I'll start and I can, I question the, how much of what we're going to do with this block party? And what about all of the money we've spent to put items in there? Who's going to watch it? Who's going to enforce it? I struggle with that greatly because we can build a lot of things or have capital projects. I'm not real happy that it started at 15,000 and automatically went another 10,000, you know what I mean? That's not Mr. Fletcher's at all, you know what I mean? I'm just bringing it out, throwing it out on the table for discussion that I just don't think really it's necessary with a lot of things we've got to do that we've actually got going in the city. Not that it's an okay idea, I just don't know if it's going to be an albatross for the city or not. So that's my opinion.
Yeah. Well, my concern, I have concerns also, but my concern is more along the legal legality of it, of what, of the consequences that could result to the city if people got hurt using the equipment. If they borrowed the trailer and they backed it into somebody's house or car, who's going to be held responsible? Would we have liability? Things of that nature. Seems like we're taking on a lot to get, I'm not sure how much we'd get for it.
Well, Mayor, not having the benefit of being here earlier and on the council when I assume this item was brought up, a little context for me would certainly be helpful and just having an understanding of the purpose and the vision behind it. But I do have some questions that I hope can be addressed either by the city attorney or through surveys or other information perhaps, what other cities have done. I know larger cities sometimes have programs like this because they have very large departments and they have people that can manage that. But I'm concerned, or would be concerned, about our liability regarding how it's delivered, set up, who takes it down, incidental mishaps, kids playing around and getting hurt or whatever. But how are reservations managed? Is there a damage deposit required? These are things that I'll be asking about and hopefully will be addressed. Who's going to conduct the safety inspections on the vehicle before and after, before it's set up and used, and then afterwards to make sure that it's ready and available for the next resident? Who is going to deliver this thing? Are we going to have professional people in our own staff who know how to operate trailers, take it out there? Or are we going to bet and assume that one of our residents is going to come pick it up and know exactly how to drive a trailer and how to back it up? And as it was said, you know, one's over a neighbor's mailbox or hit somebody. Those are some real concerns I think we should be thinking about. You know, is there a limit on the number of times a resident in a year can reserve this thing so that it's available to all residents? But you don't want just one resident dominating it, you know, all the time because they're wanting all sorts of parties and what have you. These may seem a little picky, but I think they're all issues that are going to arise out of discussion, I would think. And I wonder if policy and the use of that will wind up becoming an ordinance, that will be in an ordinance form. So those are just some things that came to mind as I, you know.
Well, let's take those in order. For context, Councilman Fletcher, would you?
Sure.
Cover that?
So we looked at this last year because we had a couple of block parties that have come up, and it does include closing down the streets and gathering the neighbors together. So the pretense behind it was, you know, our focus has always been, you know, neighbors helping neighbors and trying to gather neighbors together to do things within the community. And so irregardless of what area it would be utilized in, that was the pretense, which is simply to have a, something that the city would be able to offer through our Park and Recs Department that we formed last year that would be able to bring the neighbors together. And so I don't remember what the original amount was, if it was 15,000 or 25,000. I thought it was closer to 25,000. Could be wrong. It's been a year. I've slept a couple times since then. But irregardless, it wasn't something that was a lot of capital to make happen that would bring neighbors together across the board. But the trailer would be equipped with different things that would bring that neighborhood together, such as, you know, it already have everything that you would want for a block party. The games, the bounce house, coolers, tables, chairs, you know, the 10 by 10 covers, barbecue. Everything would be all in one place. This would be managed through our Parks and Recs Department. And just as, you know, you reserve the pavilion, then you would reserve that trailer for the weekend. It would be something that city would deliver. And then the person that had originally signed up for it, it's not just one person coming in to sign up. They have to have the okay of the neighborhood. At least I think that's the pretense that we were going to talk about in more detail as far as, you know, what would we want to see within the neighborhood? Because you can't just shut down the street if one person wants to throw a park. You'd have the neighborhood together to be able to do that. So that was kind of the pretense behind it and what we talked about in Budget Workshop last year. So I think at this point, it hasn't been a, an urgent item because there's been other things that we've had to address throughout the year, and so I know staff's worked on it in a couple of different occasions to try to bring it, you know, to fruition at this point. And so I think the discussion tonight was going to be more about what those rules would be and then also, you know, how would we, how would people sign up for it and how would it get reserved? It wouldn't be something that a resident would pick up and drive home. It would be something the city would deliver to that location, specified location. And then whoever had reserved it would get the keys to the trailer and they would be responsible for the items that would be used during that time.
And Public Works did a little workup after the control of the trailer. Would you bring us up to speed on that?
As far as the policy surrounding it or the sizing, the lug, the equipment inside?
Well, the controlling of the, of the trailer, sign, you know, who, what it would take to get it from the city, what the requirements would be, et cetera.
Okay. Well, that probably.
What do we consider?
That's probably covered in what Bill's drafted up. So we, staff pulled a lot of information together, kind of tried to parse out what fit better for a city of our size. Because a lot of these cities are, you know, Arlington, San Marcos, these are big cities. So we had to try to trim it down to fit Shenandoah, and that's what Bill's put together to discuss tonight.
I put together a list, if you will, of kind of the rules and regulations when I looked at Sugar Land, Arlington, Plano. Those were the ones I remember that had similar trailers. And generally, of course, they're going to require a deposit, but they also require that whoever is the user is responsible for any and all damage to the trailer regardless of who causes the damage. That's one. The user is responsible for any personal injuries related to the use of the trailer and indemnifies the city. Two of the cities require that you have insurance to cover the loss, and those cities went out to an insurance company and found, so you can buy insurance through the city. It's through, you sign up and the city just advances those monies, forwards those monies onto the insurance company. Generally, it's about $175 for a weekend for insurance. Most of the cities require that the user inspect the trailer and contents prior to use and note any damage. Upon return, the city employees check for damage and photograph. Most of the city's troubles appear to be with damage that happens to the trailer or the contents during the weekend, and then people don't want to pay for the damage that's done. Most cities have a list of prohibitive activities or uses. I made just a list of some of them. Prohibited in activist rallies, marches. Prohibited for animal obedience training. Prohibited in conjunction with the use of bonfires. Prohibited in conjunction with the use of fireworks. Not allowed for cinematography or photography or for commercial use. Not allowed for fraternity or sorority events. Not allowed for gun and knife shows, for haunted attractions, for rodeos, séances, union meetings, a whole list. And then very common, very common, all the cities, if you rent the trailer, you're going to have to provide bathroom facilities. It can be in someone's house, but there have to be open bathroom facilities available for anyone associated with use of the trailers. Apparently, some cities have had problems with lack of bathroom facilities and people needing to use the bathroom. Hours of operation are restricted. Street closures, these, when you park the trailer, it's going to affect people being able to use their driveways, generally at least four houses and, or more. So one of the problems cities have had, people have backed into the trailer, not the one renting it, a neighbor backing into it. Parking restrictions, rules about trash pickup the night of using the event because lots of neighbor complaints of the next morning trash. And of course, noise has been a problem, and there are rules, most of the cities have about noise. And one or two have rules prohibiting the use of alcohol. Those are the, there's, each of the cities have a few different rules, but these rules were pretty much common to all of them. On prohibited uses, I kind of gathered a bunch of them, but two of the three cities had prohibited uses, and they're included in what I gave you.
And what about deposits?
Yes, yes. It's a deposit required and, of course, two of the three cities require you buy the insurance or you can't rent it. One difference I see, I think, in Shenandoah versus these bigger towns, a town of 100,000 or 70,000, if you damage the trailer and you don't pay for it, they'll sue you. I don't know what this city council's appetite would be in a city of 3,500 for suing a resident if they damaged something and didn't pay for it. Just something to consider. But anyway, those are the rules that seem pretty much common to the cities that have these.
Right off the top of our heads, how many requests for road closures to throw a neighborhood party have we had? I know of perhaps two.
Two. Two.
That, I know that because it happened in my neighborhood. But as far as other neighborhoods?
All I recall is two.
We have a party every Tuesday night.
Your parties don't require a trailer.
They don't require that trailer.
If we had something like this, would the property owner of a short-term rental be able to ask for the trailer?
Yes, unless you had a rule that prohibited it, and that would be, that would take a lot of coordination to keep up with who has short-term rentals. And then we would have to ask, okay, Mr. Smith, you have a short-term rental. Are you using it for yourself or are you using it for a short-term rental?
Well, back to the original part, you're not going to close a street down for one person, so the neighborhood would have to agree to that. So a short-term rental is a part of the issue in this situation.
Yeah, I can think of at least one person that wouldn't go along with the block party.
Well, it doesn't have to be unanimous.
I know.
It would be majority.
So what is, do we have an opinion from, from the innermost council? Part from?
Well, I know what I was going to recommend, which was that we bring this back as an agenda item to release the funding, if there's interest in doing that.
Well, you can make that motion if you want to.
Do you mean it would be appropriate to make the motion at this point in time?
Well, it's appropriate to ask that that be put on.
It could be your council inquiry.
Yeah, you can do that in council inquiry, ask that it be put on a future agenda.
All right, fine. I'll do that.
I just think, just, Mr. Mayor, I just think the list that he just, the cons outweigh the pros. I think on it. It's just my opinion.
Well, to me, the whole process, I wouldn't even consider going through all of that. You know, I would have to make other arrangements. I mean, that's, that's a pretty, a pretty long list of requirements just to get this thing outside of the city's parking lot.
And then there's the unintended consequences, and we don't know anything about it.
All right. Any additional discussion? If not, we're going to move on.
I'm sorry, did someone second Ron's motion?
No.
You'll have to wait till inquiry.
All right. We're going to move on to item number seven. In ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas approving an annual service plan update to the service and assessment plan and assessment role for public improvements for the Metro Park Public Improvement District and enacting other provisions related thereto.
Mayor and council, as you see in your agenda pack, this is a yearly update that's approved. The Metro Park Public Improvement District, known as the PIT, was created in 2017 with the sale of the bond in 2018. This update is required every year so that the assessments that will be paid back on those parcels towards those bonds, because no city funds are used for those bond repayments. It's all based on the assessments on the lots designated out there in the original service and assessment plan. We need to approve this update so that those numbers can be formally sent to the tax assessor for collection on the upcoming tax year.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
We have a motion to adopt the ordinance, but Councilman Brad?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Pollard. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, final report of public hearing regarding a proposed special use permit for a wine and malt beverage retailer's permit on premise for GSBR Woodlands LLC, also known as Game Show Battle Rooms located at 8980 Metro Park Drive, Suite 100, Shenandoah, Texas.
I'm happy to make the presentation, but did we skip an item?
Yeah, we skipped one.
We skipped item eight.
Item eight is withdrawn.
Yeah, that was on purpose.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item eight was tabled.
Pardon me. Mayor and council, as read, Game Show Battle Room is located in the Metro Park Shopping Center at 8980 Metro Park Drive, Suite 100. They are requesting a wine and malt beverage special use permit. The planning and zoning commission has reviewed this application and recommends its approval. It should note for the council, this does not include any late hour requests.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to open up the public hearing on this item at 7:30. Is there anyone here to speak regarding this item? There's no one to speak on this. We're going to close the public hearing at 7:31. We're going to move on to item number 10, discussion of possible action to adopt the following ordinance. In ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, granting a special use permit for a wine and malt beverage on premise permit for GSBR Woodlands LLC located at 8920 Metro Park Drive, Suite 100, Shenandoah, Texas, providing for a penalty in the amount of $2,000 for violations thereof, providing severability and providing for an effective date. Have a motion?
It's a move to approve.
A motion to approve, by Councilman. We have a motion to approve by Councilman Brad.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fletcher. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, discussion of possible action to ratify the accounts payable for May 2024. Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brad. All right, we're going to move on to civic club updates. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good.
Well, hold on, hold on, Charlie. Moving right along too fast here. All right. On item 11, discussion of possible action to ratify the accounts payable, motion by Councilman Brad, I mean Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now, Charlie.
Get some extra steps in there.
So good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a very brief update tonight, but the big part of it is just three days away. We have our Independence Celebration coming up this Saturday at the main city park. It will run from 10:00 in the morning until 12:00, so hopefully we'll be a little bit of the heat. To help with the heat, we have six different water activities that'll be that day. So for folks that are watching, we aim and are going to plan on attending. Please bring your swimsuits because there's going to be plenty of opportunity to be wet. The main part of the parking lot will be pretty full of the actual activities themselves. So parking will be available at the pool. We'll have the typical train transportation coming back and forth for folks so that they don't have to walk all that way. Cone of Ice will be there. We'll have hot dogs, snacks, DJ, so all the typical fun that we see at the Independence Celebration. The other thing we have coming up, although it's not a huge thing, is we do have the back-to-school party coming up on August the 3rd. So that's still a little ways away, but we do so through the staff association with the city in that particular event. Any questions? All right, I hope to see y'all there on Saturday.
Thanks, Charlie Drowe.
All right. Item number 13. Should we go with you first or should I, the city attorney? Or are you going to turn it over?
I have no other updates, but I guess the city attorney took on it.
At the request of staff, the city is issuing the following public announcement tomorrow. It'll be as follows. On December the 26th, 2023, the City of Shenandoah, Texas, the city, became the latest in a long line of companies and municipalities that hackers have attacked, such as Neiman Marcus, the city of Tomball, the city of Baltimore, and most recently, car dealerships. The city's defensive mechanisms were successful in stopping the attack with the loss of less than 1% of the city's data. The city immediately launched a prompt and thorough investigation in consultation with outside cybersecurity professionals who regularly investigate and analyze these types of situations to analyze the extent of any compromise of the information contained within our network. In addition, the city upgraded its existing system to protect against similar attacks. Based upon its comprehensive investigation and document review, the city now believes that certain files within our network containing employee and past employee information may have been accessed and acquired by the unauthorized party in connection with this incident. The city does not maintain social security numbers, bank account, or credit card information on residents. The city has notified those potentially affected via U.S. mail to the extent that it had a known home address. Your notice letter explains what information may potentially be at risk as well as steps you can take to safeguard your information. If you did not receive a letter, we have no reason to believe any of your information was affected. And that will be released both on our website and to the press tomorrow.
Just to reemphasize the concern that some residents may have about their individual information released or being subject to misuse. The city does not hold personal information, credit card, or anything like that when they pay online bills and all.
That's all done third-party through our providers. That whole PCI compliance on those informations?
All right. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Earlier, a citizen said that they thought that over 400 addresses or people were released as their personal information was released. Is that correct?
Yes, that is only, but careful, it's employees and past employees. Okay?
So it's not residents?
It's not residents. Now, to be clear, if you were a past city council member and paid by the city, you could be included in that information. But there are no, if you weren't paid by the city, you're not included in that list.
Thank you for that clarification because I was alarmed earlier.
And I want to personally thank our IT, in-house IT manager for having the precognitive concern for leak, leaks such as that and compartmentalizing everything, all the data that we have here, which provided additional crucial security in keeping all of that data, minimizing that data to the amount that it was eventually accessed by the cyber criminals. I think that's, kudos to you and I want to publicly acknowledge that. And we went through a lot of heartburn getting to this point after December 23rd, when this thing occurred. So I just wanted to make sure you got acknowledged for that, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah. All right. Let me see. Okay, so no city?
No other.
Council inquiry.
Okay, if there's interest in a second, I'd like to bring back the block party trailer for the purpose of releasing its funding. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Well, we have a motion to bring, to put item number.
It won't need to be a motion, Mayor, as long as we have two council member requests.
Okay. All right, so we will, we will do that.
Okay. And then, we do have a camping ordinance, I guess, but my question is, do we need to update it because of the location of the water plant?
That's a, that's a good question. We had, once we start construction, yes, we probably will need to update that.
Okay. And then I wanted to thank Lisa for her new cash flow report format, which is making me very, very happy seeing that report that in that format. And I too was, wanted to thank Chris for his dedication in solving that security issue. Many don't know that he gave up personal vacation time at Christmas to handle that situation. And the city should be proud that they have dedicated employees like Chris that show that kind of support for our residents. That's it.
I'm good today.
I couldn't let it go without pointing out, I couldn't let it go without pointing out the outstanding job that our city is doing, specifically John Maynor and Billy, by promoting our city, our hotels, particularly our restaurants, all of the local businesses that support and pay the taxes, the majority of the taxes for the city of Shenandoah. Our city is out promoting this city all over the country. We've in the last year have put a major emphasis on helping our businesses and we've more than doubled the number of Facebook followers and social followers on all media. We're constantly getting recognition. We've gotten the attention of a lot of people, a lot of other cities around here on how aggressive that Shenandoah has been. This is certainly all because of the efforts that Kathy has directed and John has directed in making the city the premier spot, I mean the premier spot of the Woodlands. It's like the Woodlands is one of the best places in the world, but we're the cherry on top. And thank goodness for what our people are doing here, making it happen. And thank you very much for those of you that I just mentioned.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Well, another shout out to Lisa. I came by and visited with Lisa yesterday. I had a lot of questions about this MDD, the way the cash flow is operating and how it is presented and the style of presentation. And she walked me through the whole thing. And then she just, I had just general questions, financial type. I've worked with a lot of public finance directors over my career. She was so good and so able to answer my questions. I just want you to know, I'm very impressed. I think we have a really solid individual in that, in that position. I want to thank you for taking the time yesterday. I'll try to do better and not lose track of where I am when some presentation is being made. The Tamina, I wanted to shout out for Tamina too, because, you know, we, we went to that dedication of their, their historical marker for Sweet Rest Cemetery. And it was well-attended by the city, by the way. We were well-represented. So it was a very nice presentation. Larry Forster and, and the community folks there, Tamina folks, did a great job. But Kathy, I have a question I'd like to ask you. You know, the Texas Municipal League has a small city advisory council.
Okay.
And I know you're involved in a number of things with TML now. And I just stumbled across this and I just wondered if maybe you would look into it and see if it's something that we might want to try to have some representation on. The council is appointed, apparently, and there's a number of vacancies in different regions. And it looks like maybe there's some spots available for a city of our size to have a place at the table as TML is crafting policy that they want to eventually carry to the state legislature that affects small cities. So anyway, would you be willing to?
I'd be happy to get more information for council on that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's all.
I don't have anything to add. We're going to recess right now and go into executive session. According to Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, the Texas Government Code, Government 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Potential Developmental Projects. The time is 7:45. I was going to reconvene the city council meeting at 8:20. No action was taken as a result of the executive session. We're going to adjourn this meeting of the city council at 8:21.